Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you all being here tonight and those that are listening online. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much for always doing that for us. And would you roll call for verification of quorum, please?
Commissioner Duhax is absent. Commissioner Hamburg-Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Here.
Commissioner Vu is absent. Commissioner Torres?
Here.
And Commissioner Bika?
Here.
Good, we get that housekeeping out of the way and it takes us to our public forum. We have a section always at the beginning of our board meeting that we open up to our community, staff. People have up to four minutes to come and address the board. We don't address anything about personnel or specific people, but we have lots of people come and connect with us, connect with their school board, and we're very appreciative of that. So we have three people signed up tonight. The first one is Greg Nemuth. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Gregory Glenn Nemuth. I reside at 1928 Taft Avenue, two blocks south of Memorial High School. of the Fourth Estate, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here tonight specifically to discuss the district's leadership's lack of transparency and unethical practices, policies, which I feel is imperative in light of the other post-employment benefits and potential rifts we're facing.
Greg, I just want to quote you a little bit in the sense of expressing your concern, but not pulling specific people into your discourse, okay?
I have no names.
Thank you.
My name only. Okay. In the interest of saving time and adhering to the four-minute policy, I'm going to skip to number six. I've provided background information in light of the topic I'm speaking about. When I retired last June, I was under the impression that I would be receiving post-employment benefit, and that is outlined in my letters of retirement as included in the packet. When I submitted a claim for an HRA at the end of last summer, it was returned, and that was the first sign something was wrong. Last fall, I continued working for school activities, athletic events, as I've done for years. HR contacted the Memorial Athletic Director about my HRA access. I thought that was why my claim didn't go through, because I was maybe working for the district when I shouldn't have been. That was clarified, that was taken care of, but I still wasn't receiving the benefit. And it finally culminated with a December 15th message from the payroll manager saying that it was a practice slash policy of the district to deny this benefit if a spouse worked for the district. I've searched board docs relentlessly on numerous occasions and have yet to find that policy. I don't think that's codified any place that's public. Subsequently, there were two meetings here at the Board. The first one was January 15th, the second was January 29th. At the first meeting, the Superintendent, the Executive Director of Business Services, the Eau Claire Association of Educators President, my wife and I were present. We had an amiable meeting, and when we departed, we left in good spirits with the agreement to come back together again, which we did the 29th of January. At that time, everyone was present at that meeting except the Superintendent. We realized quickly that there was continuing obfuscation, there was confusion, and at one point I almost felt, if I can paraphrase one of the Democratic candidates for governor, as if the knife had been pushed in my back four inches and when it was pulled out two inches, I was supposed to say, "Thank you." The association president asked a "what-if" scenario, and after some quick calculations and discussion, we came up with a figure of about $43,000. I received a clumsy apology. I was told that retirement presentation materials are being updated for the coming years, people, so that this wouldn't happen to anybody else.
Greg, I'll give you another 30 seconds, maybe?
Okay. There's a darkness of sorts that has come over the district. My paternal grandfather wanted my father, Glenn Nemuth, to cut his education short at sixth grade. Enclosing. I was fortunate that my grandmother argued for my father to finish eighth grade. He finished eighth grade, raised all of his children to believe in the power of principle and the importance of education. His four children all finished college. One son finished a master's degree, and the other a PhD. Dad told me several decades ago, "What's right is right, fight for it." He also told our youngest daughter shortly before he died at the age of 79 that he always regretted not being able to go to high school. Honorable members of the Board of Education, please do not rubber stamp everything that comes to you from the executive staff here at 500 Main. Fight for the right. Make them explain in detail reasons for past missteps and imminent lapses of reason, some that you will hear about this very evening. Investigate spin and the need for rush to actions. I apologize for any discomfort this has caused the Board. Thank you for your time. I also welcome further inquiry.
Thanks for the written thing, Greg. Thank you very much. Next person on the list is Katie Steffes. Hi, Katie.
Good evening, everybody. I'll be kind of quick. The timer was stressing me out over there, so I'll be good.
I think timers stress everybody. I'm really sorry that we have to do that.
No, that's all right. Members of the Board, the newest coverage of the school shooting in Florida and even here close to Memorial has died down, and I'm still greatly troubled by it. I've been wondering if coming here to speak would actually put things into motion, or if it's just preaching to the choir. I know some will disagree or have questions, but I feel compelled to speak about social emotional health, because if people don't speak up for what they believe in, then social change doesn't happen. Mental health starts at birth and does not stop developing for the rest of our lives. Raising and teaching children who are connected, resilient, and able to self-regulate is everybody's job in school. Our district has a vision to challenge minds, build relationships, and nurture individual growth to prepare all students for post-secondary success. There are many initiatives and action research that people are doing throughout the district, but I would like to talk about a practice that has truly spoken to me and reflects exactly the district vision. There have always been pendulum swings back and forth in education and curriculum and instruction, and many are always saying, "Just wait for it to swing back." I've taught preschool in this district for the past 12 years, and over the past two, I've been learning about one that is changing my life forever. For me, there's no going back. Conscious Discipline is changing how I look at everything related to human nature, and I have seen actual changes in teachers' classrooms and children. I don't know why I'm crying right now. I'm so sorry. Okay. So, Conscious Discipline would tell me to take three deep breaths, and I'll be better. It's also one of the most culturally relevant professional development opportunities I've ever had a chance to receive. I've watched webinars, read books, and been to a week-long institute, as well as attended trainings provided by our program and our fearless leaders. Many in the audience have already been hearing about it recently, and it's been on the early learning Facebook page frequently. It's an evidence-based practice developed in brain research, powers for adults, building a classroom family, and seven skills of discipline. According to Conscious Discipline, children need to feel safe first, and all kids need to feel loved and cared for before they can access their brilliance. Their brain literally will not allow them to learn until they feel those things. This is true of students pre-K to 12th grade. All students come from many different backgrounds. They may come to school sad, lonely, hungry, or anxiety-ridden, or come from lives of trauma, and we do our best to teach them. Unintentionally, we may add extra stress or anxiety by holding rewards over their heads, making behavior into a competition, or a fear of losing privileges. This year, as an itinerant special education teacher, I am faced with an uneasy feeling of identifying children who have lived in the life of trauma for the first three or four years of their life with emotional behavioral disabilities. These kids are coming to school from a life that that's all they've ever known, and they need a chance to rewire their brains, and in our preschool program, we're learning nurturing safe ways to do just that. At Prairie Ridge and the 4K Partner Community Sites, we're working toward full implementation of conscious discipline and skills and structures that are being put into place. We have two adults to every 10 children, which is mandated by Head Start Performance Standards and Childcare Licensing, and sometimes there are more adults supporting students in those classrooms. Having additional adults in our classroom is not meant to make children dependent on us, it's meant to keep children safe, build relationships, and support them so they can be successful. District-wide, we have amazing and dedicated staff that touch children's lives every day. I believe our whole district needs more training about brain, about the brain, trauma-sensitive classrooms, and cultural relevance as it relates to social-emotional development. I hope that decisions related to staffing and teacher-child ratios are looked at closely, especially when thinking about additional support in kindergarten classrooms and developmentally appropriate practices regarding play. One more second left.
You're fine.
Can I? Okay. Compassion, empathy, and connections drive children to be responsible, productive citizens, and teaching children self-regulation, composure, and kindness benefits everyone, not just the most at risk. The students who have been going into their schools and inciting violence have been calling out for help for far too long. We cannot wait until students are in high school to show warning signs or offer help or mental health services. Learning and practicing this new way of thinking is of the hardest, most challenging things I have ever done in my life. It's opened me up and changed me, but I'm forever grateful. I'm a better teacher, mother, wife, sister, daughter, and friend, and I have not heard from one teacher who is implementing this practice that it has not touched. If I accomplish anything tonight, it will be the hope that others acknowledge that social-emotional health and development needs to be taught intentionally and as passionately as English, math, Fayed, all of those other things, and is arguably one of the most critical life skills that we can teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Was Conscious Discipline Monday night canceled because of the snow?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to go. Okay, thank you. Third on our list and last is Mark Goings. Hi, Mark.
My name is Mark Goings. I live at E17450 County Road V in Augusta. As school board members, you are charged with a daunting task of overseeing the educational system in Eau Claire. To put it succinctly, each child, each parent trusts you to do what is best for them. Yours is a noble calling. Aiding in the task of shaping the future is your staff, all staff. While contract designations and job descriptions don't mean much to a child, being surrounded by quality, caring adults does matter to each one of them. Tonight, as you discuss OPEB, I hope you learn a lot and ask many questions, but also, I challenge you to think about how this discussion impacts not only your budget, but also your staff. How does the way you talk about OPEB impact the 20-, 30-year promise you've made to the staff of the Eau Claire Area School District? How does the anxiety surrounding the OPEB discussion affect them? But more importantly, how does it impact your goal of attracting and retaining top-quality staff? So during the listening sessions, which are to be held over the next few weeks, please listen to the questions, the thoughts, and the stories shared by staff. These people have dedicated their lives to the quality of education in Eau Claire. These are the people that you want to have walking with you on this noble journey. By working together, we will bring about the greatest future. Thank you.
That takes us on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Hardbeck.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. First thing I'd like to do is to review the upcoming events for the school board. Over the next few weeks, there will be four committee meetings. On April 25th, there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, and that will be at 11:30 a.m. On April 26th, Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Council will meet at 4:30. On May 1st, the Parent Advisory Council will meet at 7 p.m., and on May 7th, there will be a Policy and Governance Meeting at 8:45 a.m. All of those meetings will take place in the Administration Building, and then on May 7th, there will be a regular meeting of the school board. Tonight, we have several recognitions, and we're going to start with our student who is from Memorial, and his name is Sam Raycheck, and I think he is sitting on the front row. Sam, would you stand up, please? So, we are here to congratulate Sam on receiving a perfect score on the ACT exam. It's obvious that everyone recognizes what an accomplishment that is, but I don't know that everyone knows how rare that accomplishment is. It's just .136% of all test takers who receive a perfect score of 36. So, Sam and his father, Phil, are here tonight, and Phil, if you want to stand up too. We always try to get a few tidbits of information about the people that we recognize, and I think, Sam, we could safely say that you could qualify as a scholar, athlete. He's captain of the tennis team and is a two-time individual and team state qualifier in tennis, and he took fourth place at state tennis. Sam is also a member of Youth Leadership Eau Claire and was a national merit finalist, so you've been here before. I understand that you're going to study political science?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, oh, good. Okay, and so that'll be your realm in the future. So, we're very proud of you and very pleased for this individual accomplishment. It reflects well on you, and it certainly reflects well on the school and the school district, so thank you very much for your hard work. We'll let you, yeah, make a quick exit.
Homework.
Recipients of the 2017 Herb Cole Educational Foundation Awards were recently announced, and Susan Houston from DeLonge and Bev Pearson from Memorial have received the 2018 Cole Fellowship Awards. And I think Susan is here tonight. Susan, would you stand up? Bev wasn't able to be with us tonight, but she'll be with us at the next meeting. Both teachers will receive $6,000. The Teacher Fellowship recipients are educators who've been chosen for their superior ability to inspire a love of learning with their students, their ability to motivate others, and their leadership in service within and outside the classroom. Susan and Bev will be honored at a regional banquet this Sunday in Chipewell Falls, so congratulations, Susan, on this honor, and maybe you can come back and cheer Bev on when we recognize her as well. Tonight, we also have another educator to recognize, and that's Elizabeth Dulman. And Elizabeth, where are you? Oh, right there on the front row. She is a fourth-grade teacher at Sam Davy, and she recently achieved National Board Certification in the area of middle childhood generalist. She said that becoming one-to-one with devices and integrating technology to transform the learning environment is what led her to this path. This said that National Board Certification has improved her teaching in many ways, and that digging deep into the reflective and analytical practices was refreshing and led her to make changes in her classroom to improve student outcomes. Risk-taking and collaboration are celebrated, creating a more dynamic learning environment. She's gained a deeper understanding of content areas by knowing misconceptions, background knowledge, and typical challenges students have in each area between the ages of seven and 12. So, this is quite an accomplishment. It takes a great deal of time and study, and we're very pleased that you've achieved So, on Friday, we were notified of the Wisconsin Title I School of Recognition Awards. There are 135 schools across the state which are being honored this year. Schools awarded this distinction receive federal Title I aid when they have significant numbers of students from low-income families, and the schools that earn this recognition must also meet the state's test participation, attendance, and dropout goals, as well as other achievement data. So, Longfellow Elementary is once again being recognized this year for beating the odds school, and I think Sarah Lynch might be standing in the back of her own. What this distinction means is that, as a school, they have achieved at a level that is in the top 25% of schools with significant poverty within their school systems, and they have above-average student achievements in reading and math. So, this is not the first time that Longfellow has received this honor, and I think it speaks to the instructional ability of the school staff and to the care with which they approach the needs of each student. So, congratulations.
Oh, that was so exciting. That takes us, thank you, Dr. Hardbeck, and thank you, everyone, and for everybody who we are honored to be part of in our school district. That takes us to my president's report. We reorganized as a board the first meeting in May, and we have incumbents all back on the board, and we have a new board member, Lori Klinkhammer. Would you like to stand up? Lori, please, on the board. Yay, Lori. Board members that just went through election will be sworn in at the end of this board meeting, so if anybody wants to hang around and be part of that, you're more than welcome. So, I have to honor two. Lori Bika's back on the board, and Dr. Torres, and Dr. Bika, and Joe Luganbill, so let's give them a round of applause. It's also a night to, oh, before I say this, I wanted to say too about the Herb Cole Awards. I went last year for the people from the district and all around this area. Herb Cole last year, his award for the Herb Cole Foundation used to be $3,000, and last year, he doubled that because of school funding and because of educators. You ever get any kind of opportunity to thank him for his support of educators and schools, please do that, because he's an amazing, amazing man to do that. So, the other thing tonight, too, is at some point during the meeting tonight, I'm going to suspend the rules. Catherine will be back. This is her last meeting tonight. She's been on the board for nine years, and we want to honor her a little bit, but she had to run to choir tonight because, of course, we were supposed to have our meeting on Mondays, but we never have meetings on Mondays anymore because it's always snowing or sleeting.
It's the work sessions.
Yeah, and so, or if we plan a work session, I think that has something to do with it too. I think you're right, Dr. Hardbeck. So, please be aware of that when Catherine comes to get back, because we want to honor her. She, as I said, is completing her ninth year on the board. So, other than that, that's the conclusion of my president's report, and that should take us to our student rep reports. Who's going first tonight? Ryan? Hi, by the way. I didn't even get to say hi to you when we ran in here tonight, so, Ryan?
Good evening. I've heard some concerns from students and staff that class sizes will be increasing significantly for next year. I'd be interested in hearing some background on this issue, as I believe that class sizes are a very important factor in student learning. Small class size is a topic that was sold to the voters in last year's referendum, and while this particular issue may or may not apply to the referendum directly, it is still an issue that the community strongly supported. I would advise against abandoning this philosophy of small class sizes, and in addition, I would like to invite all of you to attend an anatomy or other lab-based science course to see the negative effects on learning that more students per section would bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Lauren?
Good evening. Over the past few board meetings, Ryan and I have made comments about the need for direct discussion to students regarding safety and security concerns at the high schools, and I'm happy to say that last week, a series of announcements were made to students from administrative members, and so I'm happy to see that steps are being taken to educate students in that regard. So hopefully, in the following school years, Memorial will continue to be a safe place for students, and part of that will be our new secure entrance, which is well underway. There have been some challenges regarding parking spaces and a fire alarm yesterday, which was well handled, but students are excited about that for the coming years. And during AP registration today, students were informed that there will be a two-week hold on the construction during AP testing, and so they were thankful to learn about that. I'd like to extend a congratulations to our incumbent and incoming board members on their election or reelection and commitment to our schools. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Lauren. I know, aren't they good members of the board? I think they're wonderful. Okay, that takes us on to school board committee reports. Who's up for a committee report tonight? PNG, okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Luganbill.
All right. The Policy and Governance Committee did not meet on Monday, obviously, due to the snowstorm. At our next meeting, we will be discussing the facility use agreement. You'll see that that's been pulled from the agenda for tonight, mainly because we just need more input from Parks and Recreation and other groups, and also, we want the Equity Committee to play a role in that, which you'll see on the agenda for tonight, a discussion about that. Also, on our upcoming agenda is a discussion about construction renovations projects, play-based learning, and a policy on special education private placement complaint process. We have on our workflow for the committee 54 policies to work through in the next year or two or three or four, and also a discussion on our policies and protocols on school entrances, so it should be very interesting.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganbill. That would take us, then, on to our legislative update. Commissioner Luganbill?
Hello again.
Yep, hello.
Okay, well, on Monday, the governor signed 90 bills into law, and I will go ahead and I'll go through each of these, and I'll take about one minute each, and I, there are only a few that actually impact local schools. One of them is regarding the signature requirement for nomination of candidates. One of them is with the Early College Credit Program, which we already addressed through our policies at the last meeting, and one of them is regarding the Supplemental Aid Program, which repeals the DPI administrative rules that are used and creates different rules from the legislature. In addition, DPI has come out with new information in the past week about the new, some new grants and additional grants with mental health programs in the schools, and there are going to be grant-writing workshops and informational And there are going to be grant-writing workshops and informational webinars for school staff to take part in. So I'll forward those to the correct people. And also, there are going to be two new legislative study committees created by the legislature and those are interim study committees that are put together to look at a very specific topic and then they come together with recommendations that sometimes are approved and sometimes are tabled. But the two that they're going to be looking at are of special interest to schools. One that they're putting together is a study committee on the investment and use of school trust funds, which we've talked about as a board with our resolution on the state treasurer. And also they're looking at a study committee to review current screening, identification, intervention, and treatment protocols for dyslexia in pre-K through 12 schools. So should be very interesting topics.
Thank you so much. That then takes us on to our consent resolution agenda. Any board member can pull an item for clarification or questions and we will attempt to approve them all in bulk. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2018. The financial report of March 2018. Gifts in the amount of 8 million, 8,000, wouldn't that be nice? Gifts of the amount of $8,295.62 for the period of March 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2018. Payment of all bills in the amount of $11,923,415.18 and net payroll in the amount of $5,477,262.77 for the period of March 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2018. Human Resources Employment Report. Preliminary Notice of Nonrenewal of Teachers with Limited Term Employment. Reemployment of Certified Staff for the 2018-19 School Year.
I'm sorry, if you could pull that one, please.
The 2018-19 CISA 10 Contract. The five-year capital budget, uh, five-year capital project for North Star Track. The approval of, approval of elementary standards-based grading. The approval to hold listening sessions for Spanish Dual Immersion Program. Adopt New Policy 4, 343.44 Part-Time Open Enrollment. Adopt New Policy 343.45 Technical College Course Program. Adopt New Policy 343.46 Early College Credit Program. And Resign Policies 343.42 Youth Options and 343.43 Course Options. All of these items have been covered by the board previously. Could I have a motion to accept for 7.8?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Torres. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Luganbill. Can we take a roll call on that, Patty, since we did the payments of bills in this one?
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Luganbill, you have a comment or clarification for 7.8, reemployment of certified staff for the 2018-19 School Year?
No, I just have made a practice of abstaining whenever a family member's name is on something, particularly a very good band director at DeLonge Middle School. So I'll be abstaining from tonight.
Okay. All right, then I'll take a roll call vote on that, Patty, please.
I need a motion, please.
Okay, somebody put the motion out on the floor, sorry.
So moved.
Commissioner Harder, second. Commissioner Bika, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Abstain.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Okay, and with the passage of our Human Resources Employment Report, I'm going to hand this over for an announcement by our superintendent, Dr. Marian Hardbeck.
Thank you. So with the approval of the employment report tonight, you approved the appointment of Kim Kohler to be the Executive Director of Administration. And I think she might be here somewhere. Oh, stand up, Kim. Kim joined the Eau Claire Area School District in August 1995 as a 5th grade teacher at Boyd Elementary. And when Boyd closed, she made the transition to Flynn and became an elementary curriculum coordinator for ECASD in August of 2003, where she served for five years before becoming the principal at Putnam Heights Elementary School in August 2007. So you've been a principal for about 11 years. Yeah, it did go fast. Kim has been a very active leader in ECASD, serving on a multitude of committees and teams, including the Holistic Committee, the Brand Messaging Committee, the Classified Staff Evaluation Committee, the Assessment and Reporting Committee, the Supervision and Evaluation Task Force, the Elementary RTI Leadership Team, the Attendance and Attendance Intruency Model Revision Team, and the Digital Learning Teams. Kim earned her bachelor's degree from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire and her master's degree through the University of Minnesota. So Kim, we are congratulating you tonight and looking forward to the work that you will continue to do in the district.
That would take us to our individually considered resolutions. We've got two to this evening. We're going to start with the revised policy 453.4, Administration of Medication to Students. And I think, Marian, are you covering this one? Are we just, are there any questions?
If I may, President Hamburg Boyle, there was just an addition, a suggestion made after the, the first reading took place, so.
So we just need to go through that? Okay, all right, that makes sense. So if we pull it up, can we pull up the change? So we just took out the?
So the, the sentence that was taken out is the development of the rules. And typically what we do, this doesn't follow our practice. You pass the policies, we develop the rules, and then we send them to you.
Okay, so.
I move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Torres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, done. Next thing on our individually is to create an Equity Review Committee on Athletic Programs and Facility Access. I want to pull that up here. Last time, we had quite a dialogue from our community and our, in our district relative to our athletic programs, practice, facility access. And it was recommended by the board at the time to pull together a, create an Equity Review Committee on Athletic Programs and Facility Usage. So I mean, that's basically what this is. So Joe, would you want to read the charge?
Sure.
Thank you.
The board will be asked to approve the following charge for an Equity Review Committee on Athletic Programs and Facility Access. Board policy states that the purpose of a temporary Equity Review Committee shall be to meet on an as-needed basis by a vote of the board and provide a report to the full board on an equity-related issue, including equitable access and opportunities in the district's policies and programming. The board desires to create a new Equity Review Committee for the purpose of identifying issues of equity, access, and consistency in athletic programs and related facility use, and to make recommendations to the school board. Per Policy 185, this committee shall include one school board member, one ECASD educator, one principal, one executive team member, students, parents, and others who represent diverse perspectives across the community as determined by the board and superintendent.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Commissioner Luganbill?
I'll just say for the folks who are in the audience, how we did this, the last time that we had, when we've, we've had one Equity Committee in the past that we've created. And so what we'll have is a Google Doc application type form that will be put together and sent out through various mediums and there'll be a deadline. And then at that point, recommendations will be made to the board and we'll start the committee. So there'll be a little bit of a gap between now and when the committee actually is formed.
I, I want to mention too, I mean, we can have a committee of 100 people. So as we go through this process, it's worked quite well. If additional information is needed on, as part of the committee, people can come on board to answer questions as an unneeded basis as well. So there's, there'll be a lot of, you know, possibilities for input. Okay? Any other questions by the board? So can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please? Second by Commissioner Harder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We have an Equity Committee. Good, thank you. That takes us on to adjourn to committee. And these are reports to the board. After each one of these items, we are able to have input from the people attending tonight. So the first is our OPEB update and Abby Johnson's going to lead that discussion. Thank you, Abby.
While Abby's getting kind of set up and organized, I just wanted to remind the board that this is not the first time that the board has discussed OPEB and revisions to OPEB. I think the first time I heard the discussion and it had been an ongoing discussion was in 2012. And at that time, Dan Van De Water presented some options along with Linda Mott, who came and spoke to the board and she's the consultant that we've been working with again. The board asked a number of questions and asked for different options that were related to the options that were presented that evening. And that was with the expectation that they would come back and those came back sometime in 2013. Again, there were more questions and more requests for different options, which were brought back in December of 2013. At that point, after some discussion and I think some, at that point, we started to talk about changes to the compensation structure. And there were a number of items that were related to OPEB, to the increment study. I think we were looking at longevity at that time. And those were all put on hold while we did the compensation work. So now we've come for a full cir, full circle and we're ready to look at OPEB again.
Thank you for that timeline, Dr. Hardbeck. Abby? Well, can I, can I suspend? Since Catherine's back, can, can we do that? Let's have a little fun before we get into this. So Catherine, this is your last meeting. That's kind of sad for many of us. I, I want to thank you for your nine dedicated years on the Eau Claire School Board. On behalf of the board and our superintendent and the staff, I want to present a certificate of appreciation to you along with the plan, thanking you for the time, your limitless, limitless energy and expertise you so willingly gave each and every day you were on the board. You did this through, through days that were easy and days that were amazingly difficult and you were always there for the people of Eau Claire and for our board. So this may be your last board meeting, but many of us will continue to treasure your friendship with you. And Lori and I are going to work with you so that we can get a little party going before you're, you're done with the board and whoever else would like to, right? To celebrate your absolute amazing service. So here is your certificate. In recognition for your service to the children in Wisconsin Public Schools. Thank you. Means a lot. Thank you. Thank you. I have to say that when I was in the district and I was working with the union, our former union president, Duff Martin, assigned me as board buddy to Catherine and I was scared to death because I'd never had a real close relationship with any board member. And that was, it's been amazing ever since. So your dedication service to our school will never be forgotten. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's meant a lot to me too and I probably learned more than most of the kids. Yeah, I'm gonna take that for you. And then we've got some flowers for you too. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's been great to meet everybody and know more people in Eau Claire.
So I'm going to say something on behalf of the staff. I know how much you've meant to the board, but I don't know that you know how much you have meant to the staff. I think that people have always seen you as a very committed person where the students came first, the children came first, but you've always been there from the staff, for the staff. And I think as a staff, we've always felt that you cared about us as people. And as Chris said, when times were hard for all of us, you've always been like a comfort to us. And we're going to miss that comfort and that friendship and we're going to miss you. And I think it's going to be kind of like a little hole for us that we're not going to be able to fill very quickly.
Well, they know, they know my plan is to move to Texas and they said, well, you could run for the school board down there. I don't think so, but I, I know I had a couple of staff members that got ahold of my arm one day and they said, you can commute. So I, that meant a lot. But you wanted me to commute, but I'm not doing that either. Thanks, Catherine. Okay, we're ready. Thanks, Abby.
You're welcome. Now, yes, and we're super glad you're here because you've been helping us with this for a long time, right, Catherine? So we wanted to start off with a background of our OPEB. And so basically, it's district-projected active employees and future retirees, the cash payout for medical and dental, dental benefits that is currently expected to happen over the next 30 years. And based upon our current population and staff, that estimate of the cash payout is $102 million. It has a large budget impact each year. For 1718, the budget is $1.5 million alone for the stipend and 3.5, 3.8 million for health and dental. This report that we're providing tonight is only for the health and dental benefits. We have not discussed the stipend payments at all, so none of, no, no information related to stipends is in here because that is not what our focus has been. Our focus has been the health and dental benefits and I want to make sure that we're very clear and everybody understands that. We're one of the few districts in the state who still have retirees eligible for a 10-year medical benefit based upon the health and care, health insurance premiums. And many of you will remember that we went to a defined contribution plan for our current employees and those dates were staggered based upon the employee group that you fell in. So in 2008, the teachers and non-affiliated went to the new plan. 2010, it was custodians and food staff, food service staff. And in 2012, it was the hourly, or the classified staff. Budget Development's been working on this for a long time and so we wanted to share the goals with the full board. The goal is that the plans we're looking at are sustainable, that they're equitable, and that they value retention. And then we broke it down a little bit farther. And so sustainable, we looked at what does it look like for the next five years? What does it look like for the next 40 years? All plans shown eliminate the unpredictability of our current OPEB. When we talk about equitable, each classification receives an earned benefit calculated on the same basis of age and years of service. And then when we look at the old OPEB group versus the new defined contribution group, we want to make sure that everyone gets the same benefit and that's not dependent on health and dental premiums or level of health plan participation. What we, what our current plan has is if you retire with a single plan, your benefit is much less than if you retire with a family plan because it's than if you retire with a family plan because it's tied to the premiums that you are currently taking as an active employee. We wanted to value retention, and so it was very important to understand what do the staff perceive the value of the old plan to the new plan, not only in dollars, but also in flexibility. We wanted to still give options for retirement. We don't want to force people to stay longer than they want to in working for us. We talked about grandfathering, and for those of you who aren't sure what that means, it's, we looked at a group of people that would essentially stay with the same benefit, and so that we were not pulling the rug out from underneath them when they're a year or two from retirement. The options that we're showing you tonight have three different options as far as the grandfathering goal, and I'll talk about those more as we get to the numbers. But just a heads up that we've looked at five years, three years, and also zero years, and you'll be able to see the impacts of those differences. And we also are very concerned about the trust of the employees. Again, we talked about the fact that these, that our employees have been expecting this benefit many, for a very long time. And so we don't want to just take it away. We want to make sure that we're recognizing that that's an important benefit to them, and how does that impact the district as well as them. We wanted to highlight some of the pros of the current plan. Currently, after you retire, your money goes into an HRA. Those reimbursements are not taxable to the employee. So the total amount that the district contributes is the total amount the employee receives. It's flexible. It gives them opportunities to use that money in different ways. They can choose to use it for premiums on the district plan, or they can choose a plan that better meets their needs for what their health concerns are. And so depending on their choice, they can make that money last longer. The ability to use the HRA benefit for premium reimbursement until forever, that money doesn't stop at Medicaid age, Medicare age. And so again, that's providing more flexibility for the employees. If we talk about the district cons of the current plan, that the amount is dependent on health and dental premiums and single and family participation in the health insurance plan. It's unpredictable because we don't know what our health insurance premiums are going to do from year to year. An average medical trend increase is 8%, and that is very impactful to our OPEB plan because if you assume an 8% increase every year, that just makes that liability grow and grow. It's currently unsustainable. As Dr. Hardebek mentioned earlier, we've been talking about this since 2012, so it's a big piece of our budget. And the last time, the last two times that we've gone out for bond issuance for our debt, the bond rating agencies have commented about that value of that liability in comparison to our full budget. And so it's something that other outside people are looking at as well as us. So the first tier that I want to talk to you about is, we have three different tiers in each scenario, and we're going to start with Scenario A. And so Tier One in Scenario A is for employees who are currently eligible to retire by June 30th of 2023. They would be grandfathered with the current plan, and what that means is they would continue to receive a benefit based upon health and dental premiums for up to Medicare age. We know it's a fixed group of employees, and the estimate for that group is that it would cost $30.7 million to be paid out between June 30, 2018, and June 30, '35. Tier Two on Scenario A are employees who were hired before the defined contribution date, but they were not eligible to retire by June 30th of 2023. We would calculate what we're calling an earned service benefit with a factor. As of June 30, 2018, there would be no budget impact for Tier Two in the next five years because they wouldn't be eligible to retire in the next five years. When they do retire, we would pay their benefits over a five-year period. And that Tier Two estimate is $20 million to be paid out between June 30, '23, and June 30, '46. The actuaries do these, the projections based upon average retirement age, they look at our group of people, and so it's not a perfect science, it's based upon what they think is going to actuarially happen. And then Tier Three in Scenario A is employees who are in Tier Two, and they will begin receiving a defined contribution. Again, there's no impact to the budget for Tier Three in the next five years. That benefit is going to be payable over five years at retirement, and the cost of that benefit is estimated to be $9.7 million to be paid out between June 2023 and beyond. It will likely not be paid off in 30 years because we have many people in this group, and they may not, you know, they may not have exhausted that retirement period at that point in time. And so that's why I don't have an end date there because it could be 30 years, it could be 35. And the actuaries only provide a 30-year amortization schedule for us. And the other thing, and this is just like the plan is today, the employees need to separate from service to receive the benefit. So if we want to talk about the factors, I think I heard, I think I talked about a factor that was in Tier Two. And so what we looked at is a factor of, based upon your age and years of service to the district, we had multiplied $2,500 per year times that factor to come up with a value for the employees. And we would value that based upon the date that this plan goes into service. So for example, an employee with, who's aged 52 with four years of service, their earned benefit would be $19,500 based upon their years of service and the 2,500. And so within this chart, this is what we looked at as far as having a factor. So that way then they're getting a greater benefit the closer to retirement that they are. And it's based upon their current age and their current years of service to be equitable amongst their groups. I just realized that I was supposed to print these out for you and have them in front of you to make it easier, and I didn't make that happen today. So I'll get these to you in the next day or so. But what we talked about at Budget Development is all of the scenarios have three things in common, and there's levers, what we call them, of what's different between them. And so each one of the scenarios that I'm going to show you, Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three are all highlighted, but they mean something different in each scenario. So in this scenario, Tier A is, Tier One is what we talked about. There's no changing of the benefits for the next five years for employees. And I know it's really hard to read on the screen, but that's where the $30.7 million that I referenced earlier comes from. Tier Two is indicating that's the cost based upon our current population of taking $2,500 per year, their age of service, and the factor that I showed you just a moment ago. And then the blue is a defined contribution. And so there, in all of the scenarios we're going to look at tonight, all of Tier Three, they're all defined contributions, they're all exactly the same. The value of them is different based upon the different dates that people are eligible to retire, and the length of retirement. And so you can see that this scenario, it shows that $102 million for our current liability, and this proposal would reduce our liability by 42.4 million, bringing it to 69 million. So over the course of the 30 years, we would save 42.4 million. Again, this is cash. There isn't any budget impact until June 30, 2023 because that Tier Three benefit is payable over a five-year period at retirement. And then in this scenario, Tier One and Tier Two account for 73% of that final liability.
Abby, would you, would you talk about what the, what the benefit piece is paid over the five-year period?
I'm not sure that I'm following you. Their entire benefit? Is that what you mean? Yeah. So their entire benefit would be paid out when they retire and for the next five years.
But then they would have the option of, of depleting their HRA into the future?
Yeah, the HRA doesn't go away. We would contribute into their HRA for five years, but then they would have to be able to use the HRA for the next however many years, as long as they can make it last. So I think, Chris, I know where you're going now.
Yeah, thank you.
So currently, under the current plan, if, if somebody retires at 55 and they're eligible, they could receive payments into their HRA for 10 years, so to age 65. But then the, the district stops putting money into their HRA for that 10 years. In, in the scenarios we're bringing forward tonight, we would make those payments for five years and not 10 years. And so that's the difference that Chris is talking to. And you don't, it's not dependent on being retired at age 55 to get that number of payments. If they retire at 65 and you have this benefit, then we would pay it for the next five years until they're 70. But again, the money that we give you, or give the employees, it doesn't ever expire. It's theirs until it's gone, until they view this at all.
Thank you.
I did see you pointing at both. I just could see over your shoulder, you were pointing at point two there. And just on that point, that there's no impact for five years because we have a five-year grandfathering, and so people aren't moving into that Tier Three for at least five years. And so that's, that's the point of point two.
No, 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 no.
Is that not true?
No, no. So, well, it's not because they're not moving into that tier because they would qualify, but we know that they can't retire in the next five years. Right? And so the soonest, I'm sorry, Erin, I'm, yeah, the soonest they can retire is in five years, and that's the soonest we could start paying for it. I'm, I'm losing it, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. Okay. Any more questions?
Sorry to interrupt you.
Nope, that's okay.
Because once you get on a roll with this and your mind is going, you interrupted, so I apologize.
It's okay. I think I have it in a little bit later, but it's a good time to bring it out. Okay, so then Scenario B, which is the second scenario that we worked through with Budget Development, was employees who are eligible to retire by June 30, 2021. Again, it's a fixed group of employees. We would also add in freezing the health and dental premiums at the next years, so the 2018, 19 rates, to say that we know how much the maximum benefit that they could receive is. And that estimate is 16.3 million, and again, we anticipate that to be paid out between June 30, 19, and June 30, '33. Thanks, Patty, for making copies. So Scenario Two, or Tier Two in Scenario B, again, it's those employees who were hired before the defined contribution date, but they're not eligible to retire by June 30, 2021. Again, we'd calculate a prior service benefit as of June 30, 2018. It still has a factor, but the factor in this is different than the factor in Scenario A. Again, it's based upon years of service and age. The benefit, again, is still going to be the same. It's payable over five years at retirement, and the estimate is 25.3 million to be paid out between June 30, '21 and beyond. And again, that's because we know that they aren't going to retire, they can't retire until June 30, '21. And that's why there isn't a budget impact until that point in time. And then Tier Three, again, is those employees that are in Tier Two who's going to begin receiving a defined contribution. That estimate is 10.7 million to be paid out between 6, 30, '21, and beyond. Again, it's going to be paid over five years at retirement, and the employees need to retire to receive the benefit. So the factor in this scenario is a little bit different. The range is different. And so in this scenario, if I were aged 52 and had four years of service to the district, my earned service benefit would be calculated at $17,000. And that's the benefit that would be paid out over five years in addition to that defined And so when we look at the cash flow analysis for Scenario B, again, the trigger, so Tier One in this example, we're only grandfathering for three years. And the other difference with the yellow in this one is that the health insurance premiums are locked in at the 18, 19 rates. And so we don't have that unpredictability of needing to add whatever our trend is with medical insurance. That would be a fixed cost for us and known. Tier Two, again, it's the same as in Scenario A, it's just that that factor, the 2,500 base is the same, but the factor that's applied is different. And then Tier Three is, again, the defined contribution, and that mirrors what's in Scenario A. In this situation, again, our current benefits for actives is $102 million. And this scenario brings our liability down to $61.6 million. And so, again, we wanted to highlight the differences between Scenario A and Scenario B. And Tier One, the grandfathering in Scenario A is five years, in Scenario B it's three years. And then the factor differences, you can see the ranges, we started with .8 to 2.25, and in Scenario Two it's from .7 to 2.0. Commissioner Harder?
Commissioner Harder. Sorry, thanks. Both the yellow. It's, it's different from Scenario A in that the grandfather period is shorter.
Correct.
So, meaning that we have three years before folks who are eligible for retirement will be kind of pushed onto the new plan.
Correct.
But it's also different in the yellow in that the rates are locked at 2018 rates. So that I just wanted to point that out because it's, it's only listing the three years.
Yeah, we missed that. We talked about it over here.
Yeah, okay.
Right here. And it, yes, you're right. It didn't get added to, on the right-hand side over here, the grandfather for three years, and then I'm, the premium locked.
Premium rate lock, yeah.
Yeah. I'll get that updated. So if we want to talk about the Tier One and Tier Two definitions when we move to Scenario Three, again, it's a, it's a fixed group of employee. The estimate is 32.6 million to be paid out between June 30, 2019, and June 30, '46. Again, it's for employees that were hired prior to the defined contribution date. We would calculate a prior service benefit just based upon a flat $2,500 per years of service. That mirrors the defined contribution that certified staff is receiving now. And so we wanted to look at what does that option look like? There is a budget change for June 30, 2019. It's not as much as some of the other options that we looked at, but after that first year, then it is actually a budget decrease. And again, this benefit would be payable over a five-year period at retirement. And then, so you might notice that I put Tiers One and Two together in Scenario C. That's because there isn't a difference because we're just, where there is no grandfather period in this one. And so rather than combining them and getting it confused, we left it on as Tier One and Tier Two on this case, but it's essentially equal to Tier One in Scenario A and B. So Scenario C is going to be all the employees that are in Tier One and Tier Two who would receive a defined contribution. And the cost of that is estimated to be 12.3 million to be paid out between June 30, 19, and beyond. Again, that benefit's payable over a five-year period at retirement, and employees need to retire to receive the benefit. And so when we look at the cash flow analysis on this one, you can see I've got green together, and you can see the note that there is no yellow because this one doesn't have any grandfathering. And everybody that, when the plan goes into place, this would change for everybody going forward. And basically, it would say, here's what your benefit is, and it's not tied to health and dental anymore. And so we wanted to see what impact that had, and give a comparison because it, it does make a big difference. The green on here is just a flat 2,500 times your years of service. It doesn't, it doesn't have a multiplier, or it's not based upon age, it's just how many years have you worked for the district? And then the blue in Tier Three, again, it's the same defined contribution that our employees that are currently receiving a defined contribution would receive. So those are the same in all three scenarios. And this one, you can see, has a much bigger impact to our liability. Again, we're starting at 102, and we are going down in this scenario, down to 54 million. And so.
Commissioner Harder's got a question?
Could I just, again, with this, on the, on the right, just for the benefit of board members, the grandfathering is, is a buffer, and the larger the grandfathering figure, you'll notice it goes from five years to three years to zero years, and, and the buffer disappears. What you see in the bottom right corner is that the total savings over the lifetime goes up significantly as part of that. We're reducing the buffer, we're increasing the potential shock to the staff, but we're increasing also the amount of savings to the district. The green, the, there's a multiplication factor, which also is meant as a kind of a buffer, right?
Yep.
So again, you'll see this, the trend as it goes from A to B to C, that multiplication factor goes from 2.25, I think, at the top end.
Yes.
To two at the top end, to just.
To nothing.
To one, essentially.
Oh, yeah, to one.
To one. So it's 2,500 times two and a quarter. And it's based on, again, as, as Abby's been saying, time, age, and years of experience, again, to help buffer the shock of a change and, and recognize those years of service. So I just wanted to point out that trend of that we're, we're saving less as we go from, or we're saving more as we go from A to B to C, but we're also increasing the sort of, in a sense, the burden on, on the staff who are affected by this as we go from A to B to C.
Can I comment, too? I don't know if people in the audience, many of you do know this, but as, as board, we're assigned to different committees. Standing committees, we have Budget Development and then Policy and Governance. Joe and I and Eric are on Policy and Governance, so we're not necessarily plugged in all the time into the budget meetings. And Joe sits as the Chair of Policy and Governance, but Erin Harder sits as the Chair of, of the Budget Development Committee, and Erin and Catherine and Charles sit on that committee. So right now, for some of the board members, they're hearing some of this for the very first time, along with you. Others of us have gone in and out of the meetings. But I just wanted the audience to be aware of the logistics of how we're listening to this up here tonight, in case that helps, okay? okay?
So scenario C, again, kind of as Commissioner Harder mentioned, you know, A, we saved 42 million, B, we saved 50 million, C saves 57.9 million over the 30 years. Scenario C actually increases our budget even more for June 30, 2019. Tier one and two account for about 60% of the final calculated liability, and this scenario in C matches what the current employees under the defined contribution plan receive. Again, the benefit's payable over a five-year period at retirement. Some employees won't retire before 2046, so benefits aren't going to end at 2046. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the actuaries push it out for 30 years, but it doesn't mean it's going to end at 30 years because it's all dependent upon the age of your retirees when they, or your employees when they actually retire. The other thing, and this is in all of them, employees can continue to work to 65 or beyond age 65 and continue to receive that tier three benefit, because each year they work, we're giving them that defined contribution, which is the same as our current plan. If I'm still working, I'm getting that defined contribution. And so that was very important, because that way then your value doesn't ever go away and you're continuing to earn a benefit. It doesn't just stop at any certain point in time. So what I did then was I worked with the actuaries to put them all into one comparison. And so I highlighted them different colors to try to help show the differences. This is just a summary of the cash flow totals for each plan. And so again, as we were talking earlier, you can see scenario A, there is no impact to our budget, because those benefits are the same. And so when we look down at the bottom, that yellow highlight, there's that 42.4 million again, by making the changes that we talked about in scenario A. And then in scenario B, again, there's that $50 million coming up with the changes we talked about. And then scenario C, again, the changes. And so you can kind of see those ranges. And as Commissioner Harder talked about, we really looked at the grandfathering and using a factor to see how did that impact that liability? And we're very, it was very interesting to see how some minor changes had a major impact on the cash flow of the scenarios. And so I thought this was helpful to see it side by side, to be able to just emphasize, again, here's the things that we changed between the three, and you can see how it has a huge impact on that bottom line. And then, again, as Commissioner Harder said before, it's great savings for the district, but how does that impact the employee? And at, at the last budget development, we kind of, we were kind of at both ends of the scale. We had looked at scenario A and scenario C, and we're like, wow, there's some really big differences between the two of them. So is there something we can do to kind of meet in the middle, and we use that 50 million kind of as our target to see how could we get to 50 million? And so that's where scenario B came out of, because we were feeling like, wow, this is, this is making an impact, but maybe not as much as we can take, because we still had some pretty significant budget impacts that we were concerned about. But the other end, scenario C, just felt like it was too much. And so trying to get into the middle and what does that look like? And so that's where scenario B came from.
Commissioner Harder.
I just want to point out, we also had that mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, that focus on sustainability, both in the five-year timeframe and also in the 40-year timeframe. And these bottom lines are all kind of in that 40, well, and it's not quite 40 years, is it, I guess, but it's...
It's close.
Yeah. Those are in that long-scale timeframe. If you look at the first five entries in those difference, in those three different difference columns, you can see what our short-term impact is. No impact for scenario A, but things start to go down right away for scenario B, and I think even more about the same for scenario C. Now, what we were seeing was some of our original options actually were raising our costs in the five-year timeframe, and we had to work quite a bit to stop that from happening because we knew we couldn't really likely afford it. So that sustainability piece is in both, but it's, it's interesting to note, we don't actually save any money in the, in the first five years of scenario A. We save a little bit with scenarios B and C, but the real impact here is over the long term. This is not a short-term fix for our problems in particular. It helps a little bit, but none of these scenarios do an enormous amount for our short-term problems.
Could I ask a question?
Commissioner Luke and Bill. Sorry, I was taking notes.
Oh, you're fine. I am too. First time seeing a lot of this, but, and I know Linda couldn't come with the rescheduled meeting tonight. Did she discuss with your committee considerations regarding employees and their planning, whether it's, in just kind of in comparison to other districts and what other districts have seen when they've made these decisions? You know, the planning on the part of our employees when it comes to their savings, their investments, whether it's three, five, seven, 10 years out from their retirement, did she discuss kind of that kind of perspective as the committee deliberated?
Yeah, we did talk about it. She's done, she works with a lot of school districts. Clearly, that's her area of expertise, and so we talked a lot about what's a common time for grandfathering, and she sees it all over the board. I mean, five was very common. I don't think she's worked with a lot that have been more than five. She's also seen it at zero. And so I think three, she felt was reasonable, because you're not totally taking it away. And we worked with her a lot on the sustainability and looking at different options and that impact to our budget, because some of the early scenarios that we looked at did have some pretty significant budget impacts in the next five years. Not the way that we wanted them to go. You know, we weren't seeing bigger impacts until, you know, eight, 10 years down the road. And so she's seen it both ways. Does she have a recommendation? I would say no, because I think it's just what, what works well for the district, what can the district afford? And that was one of the things that we worked really hard on with her, was how do we get to a point where it's acceptable to our budget and yet still kind of happy medium? We did explore some options of the HRA versus a 403B with encouraging savings. You know, other districts that have made changes have offered a 403B option. There's some downsides to that for the employee, because those funds are then taxable to the employee. They can use them for whatever they want, but there's, there's taxes for that employee. And so I think we had several meetings where we discussed, do we like the 403B option? Do we like the HRA? The HRA just really provides a lot more flexibility, and then that taxability piece was a really big deal for our committee as well. And getting that full benefit of if we say we're giving you 2,500, we're really giving you 2,500 and not 2,000 after taxes.
Commissioner Harder?
I'm sorry to keep chiming in here, but I just want to add also the, I mentioned a minute ago, the, the short-term impact and the long-term impact, and then there's a, there's another piece that, again, Abby mentioned at the beginning, but I want to reemphasize, to contrast this with our current OPEB, that we're, this, this one is suggesting as a replacement for, that the current OPEB has an unpredictability to it, whereas in addition to the savings that we're seeing here as projected out, we're also getting a predictability here. This is, this is a known fixed amount per year that is, is much easier to budget for than the unpredictability. I will say the flip side of that is we're taking that, the, the burden of that unpredictability and essentially transferring it from the district to the staff. So it has some real benefits for the district from that perspective. It has some negatives for the staff from that perspective. The flip side of that is that there are some flexibilities in terms of how this money can be used that I think aren't as readily available with the current OPEB plan, right? That's what we talked about.
I think that, no, the age, age was one of the things that was, we had talked about, but I think the HRA is the same.
But in, and not in terms of how it can be used.
Oh, right.
There's no, no additional flexibility there, but in terms of being available past 65.
Being able to receive contributions past 65.
Yeah, yeah. And so I think there's some minor flexibilities there.
Yeah.
But one of the factors we looked at was cash value, cash value of, of these from an employee perspective, and of course, it's all really based on, on projections and, but it's, that's, that's a difficult calculation to make. But if you look at this in terms of pure cash value, you know, it's, it's, it's less, period. You know, it's just less, and it's, it's hard for it to be more. That's part of the point, is we're, we're trying to create some savings here, so.
Yeah.
Just trying to point out some, some characteristics of this, as, as we've, as I've understood it. And Catherine, I don't know if you think...
Well, I was, I was just going to say that I think our advisor, Linda Mont, said that we're one of the few districts that has stayed with this old OPEB approach, and that we really needed to update and get this worked out for our employees and for, and for the district.
I've got a few more slides I can share, and we'll continue to add through them. So again, we wanted to just highlight, because I know some of you are seeing this for the first time, what are the differences between the scenarios? In tier one, again, that it's that grandfather clause, and so in scenario A, that was a five-year grandfather. Scenario B, it's a three-year grandfather. In scenario C, there is no grandfather. And then in tier two, it's again based upon that factor, and you can see that factor difference in scenario A goes up to 2.25 on the high end, and scenario B is up to 2.0. And then again, in scenario C, everybody that would qualify, because they're currently eligible under the old plan, again, it's just a flat $2,500 times the years of service, and that's how that's valued. There isn't a factor applied to it, and there is no grandfathering. When we look at the comparison to the current defined contribution, there are a few things that are different, and we want to make sure that the board is aware of that. Under our current OPEB plan, retirement age is 55, and we would recommend that the change to the new plan would leave the retirement age at 55. We didn't want to change that. And then changing it to match the new defined contribution, it's a year, it doesn't make a big difference in our cash flow analysis, and we decided that it wasn't worth making that change because it was, it didn't have enough impact. And so we felt that was important to share with the full board, that we would recommend that the retirement age for that group of employees would remain at age 55. The years of service in the district, again, you still have to have the years of service in the district, and it's going to depend on the classification based upon the amount that you're getting. And so again, it's going to be valued the same under the defined contribution in the new plan. So if I'm in the hourly group and I'm supposed to get, you know, X number for a defined contribution under the new plan, I'm going to get that same value under this new model that we're looking at. Defined contributions currently paid, paid every year right now, and then the new plan has a proposed to pay at retirement. We did look at the option to pay it yearly, like we do with our current defined contributions. That's where we saw the really big budget impacts of two to three million dollars additional, and we knew that we just couldn't afford that. But if we're in a budget situation where we have access, we can choose to put that contribution in that year. We have that flexibility. Instead of waiting and paying it when they retire, we could set it aside ahead of time if we chose to do that. But when we were looking at sustainability and that cash flow analysis, we couldn't feasibly pay it all upfront because that budget impact was pretty severe in the first five to seven years, I think, if I remember right. Erin's shaking her head yes, so...
That's right. And I wanted to say, at the risk of saying something that might be obvious to everybody, when we're talking about the defined contribution, we're talking about staff hired after 2008, and the old OPEB that we're, this is proposing to replace, was for staff hired prior to 2008.
Correct.
And the defined contribution is essentially $2,500 a year. It looks very much like this, and that was by design, that this, what you're seeing here in terms of what we're moving to, what we're transitioning to, looks very much like that, what that group has hired post-2008. We have what's kind of essentially that tier one is, sorry, the tier two is essentially the, the buyout. We're not using that term, and I just, I'm sorry, I just said it publicly.
Earned service benefit.
Thank you. It's the earned service benefit. I'm sorry, it's shorthand. It's, but it's the earned service benefit, which is essentially that transition that we want to go from, to recognize that, the, the benefits that have been earned from that past service, and to transition over into what is essentially quite identical to, not precisely identical, but quite identical to the, the plan that staff hired post-2008 have had, so.
Do you think it'd be beneficial to put the, to put that analogy or those dates on there, so people can, as we take this to the listening session? Which... Just the qual, that's a very good qualifier or explanation.
Just to clarify.
Just clarify that the new plan is mirroring the current defined?
Anyway, we could connect it to something that's familiar, I think is a good thing. Thank you.
Okay. So some recommendations to consider, and this was our recommendations from Budget Development Committee. Again, we would keep these the same as the current plan. So under the current OPEB plan, when somebody retires, they have the choice to stay on the district insurance for as long as they want until, until they hit Medicare eligibility, or they can choose to go off. We would, we would leave that still as the same choice. They could choose to pay on, to stay on the district plan. Again, they're paying for it, and so we decided that, that may be an option if they still wanted to do it. It wouldn't be required, and that gives them the flexibility, the same flexibility they had if they retired today. This is the same as today. The HRAs don't expire at Medicare age, but they wouldn't be able to be used for district insurance after they hit Medicare eligibility. And that's, again, the same as it is today, because once you hit age 65 currently, you can no longer take district insurance. And so that's just, again, trying to be transparent that it would match how it works today. And then, again, when we talked about retirement age, we would recommend to leave that retirement age at 55 versus the 56, which is for the current defined contribution. So we wanted to, again, kind of highlight some pros and cons. So pros from, for the employees, again, these are the same as the current plan. The HRAs are, reimbursements are not taxable. That total amount that we provide is the total benefit to the employee. They can use their HRA benefit for premium reimbursement until exhaustion. Again, it doesn't end when they hit Medicare age. Flexibility, again, that flexibility is there because I can choose to stay on the district insurance plan, I can choose to do something different, I can look for options to use the HRA. Again, does it fall within an IRS-allowed reimbursement? And then again, I can choose how long I make my funds last based upon which decision I make if I choose to use the money for district insurance or a different insurance plan. Something that's new, it's very explainable and it's straightforward, because that earned service benefit is based upon past service, and it's very easy for me to say, my earned service benefit is 2,500 times my age and years of service, and then, you know, whatever that is, it's very explainable. The benefit moving forward is the same for all of the employees in the same classification, and that's what Commissioner Harder was just saying, is that this plan design mirrors what our current employees receive under the defined contribution. Employees of the same age have a different benefit, and those with many years of service receive a greater earned benefit than those with lesser years of service, again, because it's that factor and that contribution is based upon how long you've worked for the district. And the other thing that's different is that the payments are received over five years after retirement. If we want to talk about pros for the district, there's, it's sustainable, it's equitable. Each group receives the same benefit that isn't dependent upon their hire date, it isn't dependent upon which health and dental insurance plan they have, or if it's single or family coverage. For the district, it's a fixed cost. Again, it's not tied to that health and dental insurance premiums, therefore creating unpredictability, because we don't know what that medical trend is going to be. It would be easier administration of the earned benefit and ongoing benefit, because it's, here's what the amount is, and it's the same every year. Again, the benefits are not taxable to the employer, so when we make that contribution, we're not paying social security tax on that, where you would, in the, in the old stipend world, you know, we pay a percentage of tax on that as well as the employee. And so by moving to the HRA, and again, I'm only talking about health and dental, we're not talking about the stipend, but that's where that tax-free benefit comes in, and again, doesn't cost the district additional funds. And then the other pro that we talked about earlier is that our future bond rating calls would be more favorable, because we know the costs are fixed and it's defined in our amortization schedule. Cons of the new plan for employees, it's a change. The amount is less than what they'd planned on. Employee requires being reeducated to understand the new plan. Those that are closer to retirement with less years of service are going to see a more significant change or reduction in their benefit. But they also have the ability to work longer, to earn more with tier three contribution, as long as they're actively working, they're continuing to earn that tier three benefit. Employees of the same age have a different benefit, because it's based upon years of service. So if you have many years of service, you're going to get a bigger benefit than those with lesser years. Cons of plan for the district, employees are going to be upset about the change. It requires us to educate our employees. We may receive concerns from employees with lesser years of service whose earned benefit is lower than their colleagues with more years of service. So what are our next steps? So... So Budget Development wanted to lay out, here's the plans that we had looked at, wanted to talk about communication plan and timing. We've talked about listening sessions. We are in the process of trying to finalize some dates. We'd like to bring it back to the school board on May 7th to provide feedback from the listening sessions. And then after the listening sessions, again, have some time for question and answers. Do we need to bring more information back? And then depending on that, would we be ready to bring it back to the board in May or that first meeting in June for a vote? And then would we implement the plan on July 1st of 2018? So now we'd like to just open it up for questions and any more discussion that the board would like to have and what would you like those listening sessions to look like? Do you want me to give this whole presentation? Is there a plan that you want me to focus on that you are leaning towards and want specific feedback? And so I wanted to ask you, what would you like presented and communicated? We had a few ideas from Budget Development, but they also wanted input from the full board.
I just wanted to make a comment, then I'll go to Commissioner Luganville, is that okay? I have a couple things. One is, is it, do we have to be on this kind of an accelerated, get it done and bring this back that fast?
The reason I put the dates out there is because all of our calculations are based upon looking at earned service benefit calculated at June 30, 18. It doesn't have to be, but that's all of the projections that we've looked at.
Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to say was, you know, this, I just want to make a comment because I, I, I think it's more sustainable than what we have. And of course, we go back to those non-choices relative to our budget and how public schools are funded. And I, I know that we have this decision to make as a school board, but there are huge decisions that have to be made at the state level to fund us appropriately. And I just want to make that statement in the sense that there, there, that's, that's a huge elephant in the room. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't tie down and, and be very frugal, which I think we are, but I, you know, this is almost 25 years now of, of cutting, so to speak. I mean, I think we could look at every single year since 93, 94 and looking at what the budget has done. I can show you figures on where Wisconsin sits at 10.6% less than we had in 2008. I mean, if you would look at people who run businesses and, and what this looks like for us, you have to, I invite anybody in here, we will sit down and open our books and show them to you. That's how transparent it is. And I just need people in our community to start speaking about public schools and non-choices that neither choice is good, but we have to make those choices in order for us to, to continue down the road. So I just always make that comment so that people get involved and if this is something that you can get engaged in as far as the conversation, the blue ribbon commissions are going across the state as people that care about this, as employees that this is touching you where it, where we shouldn't have to be doing this stuff. So I just wanted to make that comment. Commissioner Luganville?
Thank you. I, I would agree with you that, about questioning kind of the fast track of it. I personally need more, a little more time. I, I agree with everyone that we need to have this discussion and I thank Budget Committee for the discussions that they've had up until now. To me, ultimately what we're doing here is a very difficult thing, which is attempting to put a monetary value on the trust of our 1,400 employees. And that's a very difficult, touchy thing. I, I appreciate the proposal of the listening sessions. I almost think that something of this magnitude should be brought to every single building at a staff meeting. I, I, I really think that we need to do that homework and, and make sure that this has reached, everybody needs to reach and that we have feedback from everybody. I don't think that three listening sessions for 1,400 employees would do the trick. And so I would personally, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's feasible, but I, I'd perhaps like to see us try to make an effort to be at every single building at their staff meetings.
Can I just let you know, it's not all 1,400 employees that qualify for this. So it's probably about 750, 800, so it's probably about half of them. But I just want to make sure that, okay.
Sure. Superintendent Hardbeck?
So what I do think to your point, I mean, any of these changes, whether they're at, you know, the tier one, tier two, tier three changes are eventually going to affect all employees. And so that education piece is very important. It would be helpful for us to, to continue to study this and delay it because then we could go on with our budget planning for 2018, 19 and knowing that we have to continue to factor this in. And that just moves our budget process along. So kind of slowing down the discussion and giving people time to understand it would actually be helpful.
Yeah.
Commissioner Luganville?
I agree with Dr. Hardbeck and I thank her for those comments. I think at the end of the day, we know as board members that we're going to have to make a decision on this at some point. I just want us to make sure that it's the absolute best possible decision. It can be on behalf of the staff and the whole district for the next 40, 50 years. So yeah, my, my personal ask would be that, you know, we take more time and that if possible, we make an effort to be at every single staff meeting.
Commissioner Torres?
Thank you to Abby and the Budget Committee for putting all this information together. I would suggest that if it were possible to create, all these, the, the charts are very good, very informative, but if it were possible to create examples, you know, what would be my situation in scenario A, B, and C so that we can read those charts and at the same time, understand what's the impact for one individual at each level. And I think that we need to make that effort, you know, in the listening sessions and in the buildings so we educate the audience in the best way possible. That would help us also understand what is the best that we can offer to the teachers and staff in the district. At the same time that we look at sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luganville?
Just to kind of expand on what Commissioner Torres is saying, which is spot on, I think it may be, you know, when we had the referendum and we had the calculator right on our website where anyone in town could see the direct impact on their household, it may be something helpful to have a, a calculator type thing made on the website, a tab where people can see what the different options would directly mean for them. They can put in their, input their information and have those formulas made on the website and, you know, do that maybe before a, a time that they can talk about it and provide feedback. So maybe kind of what Commissioner Torres is saying and digitize it.
Commissioner Harder?
We discussed that, that kind of a tool and even in the context of the website in, in committee and I would agree with the, the value of, of that suggestion. And I also would, I would, I would like, I would be very glad to see this, this timeline extended so that we can get more staff feedback. I think that's a crucial element of this. Right now, we've kind of done it, it's, it's, I would say it's rather weighted towards, you know, what are the concerns of the, of the district and what are the concerns of the budget and what are the concerns of what's sustainable? And we've, you know, we've kind of, I think we've sort of exhausted the options as far as I can tell for that. And now it's really time to look at the other aspects of what we're trying to achieve with this in terms of the employee acceptance, the staff acceptance of this change. I will say that I think the superintendent's comment about this affects all staff is very true and I think all staff should be involved because ultimately it's about the future of the district and the financial future of the district will affect all staff.
Anyone else? More discussion? Commissioner Dwyer?
Well, I, I just want to add that, things that already have been said, but the Budget Development Committee spent months on this, so you, you deserve to spend time looking at these plans and we looked at more plans than these three. There were other plans presented to us, so I think we just need to remain flexible and, and try to help people understand them.
Any further discussion? Then I would like to open it up to people in the audience. Does anybody want to come up and comment and give us some feedback, please? It's a lot to kind of digest. Seeing none, we will head on to getting a report update on National Board Certified Teachers. I think that's Kay, right? Thanks, everyone, for being here.
So tonight, I'm here to talk to you about a language change that we need to look to make regarding the compensation system plan document for certified staff members. So there's been a lot of talk tonight about compensation and benefits and when the compensation plan went into effect July 1 of 2016, there's a document for each employee group that outlines what that compensation system looks like. And so we, in my office, were just made aware not too long ago that the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, who is the organization that issues nationally board certified teacher certifications, they've changed the length of the certification for which teachers who pursue certification are actually certified. So as it currently stands, for an educator who earned their certification for national boards prior to the end of 2017, their certification is a 10-year certification. Based upon that, our compensation model for certified staff indicates that when you initially receive your certification that first year, you'll receive a stipend of $1,500. And then for each of the remaining nine years, you'll see, receive an additional stipend of $1,000. That covers the 10-year length of the certification. So the change that has come about indicates that anybody who attains their certification in 2018 and forward, their certification is valid for five years. And so when we look at the language that's in the compensation document, clearly that's no longer going to be accurate. So I would anticipate that the district would still want to compensate those certified individuals during the year of their certification, so at which case it currently is changing to five years. They could choose to recertify. If they recertify prior to 2021, that certification, that recertification will still be a 10-year certification. However, if their certification or their recertification happens after 2021, then their recertification is a five-year. So depending on when you get your initial certification and your recertification, if you choose to go down that road, your compensation from the district is going to be different. So rather than putting in a specific timeframe for what that certification length is, we've just, in the language, eliminated the remaining, where it said nine years of certification and just indicated the remaining years of certification. That way, depending, regardless of which direction that ever ends up, our compensation document language would always be accurate because we're going to pay that additional money for the years of the certification. So that's, that's the proposal.
I have a question and I've been wanting to ask this. Originally, it was, the entire stipend was given at one time. What is the benefit to doing it, taking that amount and putting it over, how many pay, over 22, what is it, pay periods? Does, does it affect the amount given?
So when you say that it was originally given as a full amount, you mean prior to the new compensation model?
Yeah.
I don't even know what the amount was that was.
It was the same because I worked on it, yeah. So, I mean, it was, it was the same, but it, but it was given as a stipend, a full stipend. It wasn't split up over all the pay periods.
Abby, that might be a, a payroll question.
And I, I just wondered why that was done and, and I think it is, I mean, and then you're taxed each time and you're taxed each time.
Right. So, but in general, if you do a flat 1,500 up once, you're taxed more all up front versus having it over every pay period?
Okay, so there's a significant difference there.
I don't know, it, it's gonna depend on which tax bracket you're in and what you choose for your withholding, but it keeps the paycheck even instead of having one really big time. And if the payment's 1,500 and depending on what tax bracket, maybe you're only gonna get $1,000 whereby paying it over the 22, it's less impactful.
I just think it need to be stated, that's what I would think, but it's been brought up to me over time and I, I think it just needs to be stated, so thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Beek?
I hadn't thought of this before, but is, is there an option to give employee choice? Like the single lump sum or divided?
Again, that's more of a payroll question and how it, how it gets processed.
I think it's possible. The tracking is where it would be more challenging because this way, everybody's paid the same versus all these one-offs. And I don't know right now how many employees we have that, that are currently nationally board certified. I think it would just be another area that would make it easy for us to make a potential mistake and we don't like to make mistakes. So, I mean, if that's a board desire, I mean, we could take it back to payroll and get the exact, you know, and it's, it's probably both of our departments really, payroll and HR, to see how does that, how does that change things? But I, I would be concerned that by having different options, that we could inadvertently pay somebody incorrectly.
Any other comments? Seeing none from the board, anyone from the audience? Thanks, Kay. Appreciate it. So then this will come up for a vote at our next meeting. Okay. Yep, okay, thank you. That takes us for a request for future agenda items, anyone? Seeing none, I'll take a, a motion for adjournment, but don't leave because we have to set up for agenda setting.
We have to.
Oh, and we have our swearings in, yeah, too, so.
I'm gonna re-adjourn.
I second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. So let's kind of pick a pick.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.